Can you guys hear me? Oh, there. All right, start all over. Buenos, and half a day. The Committee on Higher Education, Culture, Public Library, and Women's Affairs calls this public hearing to order. It is March 22, about 5:36. And we're here this early this evening to hear the -- for the appointment of Richard P. Sablon as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees and Bill Number 230-33, introduced by Senator Tony Ada and Senator Frank Blos. In essence, it will be relative to designating the Guam and Chamor Educational Facility Museum as the Senator Anthony Tony M. Palomo Guam and Chamor Educational Facility. I'd like to thank our -- the Vice Chair for joining me this evening, Senator Underwood, Senator Tony Ada, to my left and her left, also as the primary sponsor, and to my right, Senator Mary Torres. Thank you so much for joining me in this public hearing. If there's anyone in the community who are not here this evening in the public hearing room is that you can submit your testimony either in favor of either the appointment of Mr. Sablon or Bill Number 230. And you can either email it to my office at speaker@judiwanpat.com, franktorres@speaker@judiwanpat.com. You can fax it to 472-3589. You can actually mail it in to 155 Hessler Place in Hagatna. And the last is to be able to drop it off at our mailroom on the other end of this building. So we would like to go ahead and start with the appointment for Mr. Sablon. And those who have signed up to testify for him will be -- and I'll ask you to come to the table. There's four so far who've signed up. I'll have you come up and take a seat. Mr. Frank Areola, Dr. Ocata, Deborah Ballinger, and Mr. Eloy Harra. So it's Deborah?
It's written only.
Oh, it's written only, okay. And if there's anybody who's interested in signing up, you may go to the desk to your right, and they would be able to help you. For those of you who are testifying, please press the button on the mic. It's a highly powerful mic, so if you notice the distance of the mic and where -- and myself, that's basically the distance we would like to keep it at. Otherwise, it will be muffled, and we won't be able to get a clear testimony from you. Please state your name, the agency or organization you represent, or if it's just yourself, state so, and indicate whether you are in support or in opposition of, you know, either the nominee or the bill. And so we'll go ahead and start with you, Mr. Areola.
Half a day, Speaker Juan Pat, and distinguished senators. My name is Frank Areola, Board of Trustees Guam Community College, and I am here to testify in support of Richard Sablon. On behalf of the members of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, I submit this testimony in full support of the reappointment of Mr. Richard Sablon as a member of the board. Mr. Sablon's service as a trustee over the past five years has been instrumental in the success of the Guam Community College. His institutional knowledge and seasoned business acumen enhance his role as a policymaker. As the college strives to fulfill its mission as a leader in career and technical workforce development, providing the highest quality student-centered education and job training in Micronesia, the board truly benefits from Mr. Sablon's continued insight and guidance. As a newly elected Board Chair, I speak for the other members in saying the board welcomes Mr. Sablon's reappointment to the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, and we look forward to having his continued support as we fulfill our mission to guide the leadership and the vision of the Guam Community College. Sisus Mossi for the opportunity to present this testimony in his favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Areola. Dr. Ocata?
Half a day, Speaker Juan Pat, Speaker Underwood, I mean Senator Underwood, Senator Torres, Senator Ada, thank you for giving me this opportunity to provide testimony and support of Mr. Richard Sablon to the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. On behalf of Guam Community College, I respectfully submit this testimony in full support of the reappointment of Mr. Richard Sablon to the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. Mr. Sablon has served on the GCC Board since 2011. As Managing Director of Marianas Steamship Agencies, his professional insights into many of GCC's programs, especially our apprenticeship training program, have been exceptionally valuable to the college and to myself as the president. Mr. Sablon was a member of the Board of Trustees during the college's 2012 accreditation process, and as such was instrumental in GCC having earned its six years the highest possible reaffirmation of accreditation from the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges. In GCC's revised institutional strategic master plan that will take us from 2014 through 2020, Mr. Sablon helped identify key initiatives that will enable GCC to provide Guam and the region with a skilled, educated workforce, primed and ready to support the opportunities Guam's military buildup will bring to our community. His connection in Guam's business community have also led to valuable industry partnerships and employment opportunities for our graduates. Mr. Sablon has demonstrated to his fellow board members and to the GCC faculty, staff, and administrators that he is a committed leader who lends his full support to college activities. As such, I fully support Mr. Sablon's reappointment to the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. Sisus Mossi.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ocata. Mr. Harra?
Thank you, Speaker Juan Pat, Senator Underwood, Senator Ada, and Senator Torres, my cousin, I don't know her. Anyway, as a freshman Board Trustee, I can only speak more or less the sounding board of both Dr. Ocata and our new chairman, Mr. Areola, that yes, I fully support the reappointment of Mr. Sablon to the Guam Community College Board of Trustee. I've been able to actually attend, you know, dozens or so board meetings and other work sessions, and he truly is, you know, an innovative thinker, a strong business acumen, and his input towards our policies, our, you know, our goals, the mission of the college have been very tremendous and very appropriate. Therefore, I again reaffirm my full support of Mr. Sablon's appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the members have any questions or comments with none? Well, we want to thank you very much for your testimony.
Half a day, Speaker Juan Pat, Senator Torres, Senator Underwood, and Senator Ada. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to sit before you today for my confirmation hearing for reappointment to a second term as member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. My name is Richard Patrick Sablon. I am the Managing Director of Marianas Steamship Agencies, a locally owned and operated company specializing in shipping agency, trucking, and logistics businesses. My company has been in business for over 20 years. Overall, I have worked in the shipping industry for 25 years. I was born and raised on Guam. I attended high school at Father Duñez Memorial. Upon graduation, I attended college at UCLA, where I graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in political science. This was way back in 1983. I returned back to Guam immediately after college and have lived and worked here since. I have been married for 13 years, and my wife, Tatia, who is with me today, and I have a son, a 12-year-old son named Ivan. I have served as a trustee for the college over the last five years. I am currently the Vice Chairperson for the board. My service on this board has been a personally fulfilling experience. In addition to helping shape institutional policy, I have watched our institution expand and develop under the capable leadership of Dr. Mary Ocata. In the last five years, I have attended at least three ribbon-cutting ceremonies commemorating the completion of a new building or the completion of the renovation of another. As we speak, four of the facilities are either slated for renovation or in the planning phase for construction. The college continues to grow and expand, and these facilities will enhance the quality of the education our students receive. I -- to have been part of this has been an honor and a privilege. So when Governor Eddie Cavie asked if I would be amenable to accepting an appointment for a second term, I humbly accepted. As a business owner and longstanding member of the private sector, I fully appreciate the fact that our local economy is dependent on the quality and strength of our workforce. I am also aware that the quality and strength of our workforce is dependent on the education and training that our young people receive from their secondary and post-secondary institutions. I believe that the Guam Community College has become a true leader in educating our youth and developing our workforce. These young men and women who graduate from the college and earn their various degrees and certifications in tourism, marketing, visual communications, allied health, construction trades, electronics, AutoCAD, automotive services, et cetera, move on to become productive members of our workforce. I am a believer in the college's motto that the Guam Community College is a leader in career and technical workforce development, providing the highest quality student-centered education and job training for Micronesia. Members of the 33rd Guam Legislature, I'm hoping that you will look favorably on my reappointment, that I may continue to serve and contribute to this esteemed institution. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, Mr. Sablon, you've actually served already for five years, and now you've accepted a second set of five years to serve on the board.
Yes, ma'am.
And as busy as you are in the three businesses that you are a shareholder of, is that how do you find the time then to be able to continue, sort of speak, almost volunteer really being on this board?
I make the time, Senator. I'm sorry, Speaker. You have to make the time for this. It gets busy, but, you know, when we meet for our trustee meetings, I make the time to attend so we can move forward with the business of running the college.
So in your own words, of course, you've heard basically like an evaluation by your peers and by the president of the college. In your own words, can you share with the committee and, of course, the listening audience, you know, what in the five years have you contributed to the college?
Well, I'm not -- I don't know if I've contributed specifically to any one particular thing. I think we -- when we meet as a board, we meet to discuss issues that shape the policies for the college. We have discussions at length, and each of us provides our own individual input regarding some of these issues. And at the end of the day, we all come together to vote on the issues, and, you know, these issues become policy for the board. So I think it's just being part of the discussion, I think, you know, I'm able to use some of my experience running my own businesses in some of these discussions that we have concerning the policy. We have a good board. We are all -- we come from different backgrounds, but this board, I think we -- it is one of the pleasures I've had is the fact that the board members are all individually committed to the college's mission. And it's been a pleasure working side by side with these folks. So it makes it quite easy, actually.
So you've seen the college basically grow, change, develop in the five years that you were there. What would you like to see in the next five years?
I would like to see the trend continue. I think, you know, all these new buildings that are popping up, all the renovations that are taking place to the existing buildings, that's a testament to Dr. Ocata and her team's vision. We've got more, as I mentioned in my -- as I mentioned in my comments earlier, more on the horizon. I think that there's going to be a lot of room for, you know, for continued improvement and progress. So I'd like to see more. I think it's just going to be good for the students and good for the island.
Thank you. Any members have a question or comment? Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Sablon, I first of all want to thank you for being willing to serve another five years. And I also want to congratulate you and Dr. Ocata for the success that we have seen and the growth of the Guam Community College. It is not the same community college as it was even eight years, 10 years ago. So I just want to congratulate you for that, first of all.
Thank you.
You know, with every challenge -- with every success comes a lot of challenges. I'm sure that this wasn't a straight line, right? And so I'm wondering, during your five years of experience, what were some of the major challenges that you've encountered as a board in seeing through the goals that you guys have achieved?
From my -- from my personal experience, I think one of the biggest challenges has been finding the funding to secure some of these projects. A lot of these -- a lot of the funding that has been secured has been in the form of either grants or loans. And our president is very astute in sniffing out these grant opportunities and funding opportunities, and I think that's, you know, that's the testament to her savvy. But she has found the money, and, you know, with the support of the board, we've been able to secure the different funding sources and been able to move forward with these projects. So that's, I think, in and of itself is the biggest challenge, is finding the funding sources. Most of our buildings have been funded by federal grants and federal funding. So I'm happy to say that the tax -- the local taxpayers have not had to pull out too much from their pockets for these new buildings.
So GCC has been offering two-year associate's degrees. Do you foresee the Guam Community College offering four-year degrees that the University of Guam may not be offering in the future? Because there are community colleges that actually offer four-year degrees. And what are your thoughts on that?
I think, my personal opinion is if it's already being offered by the University of Guam, it would be redundant. And I would not want to see the community of -- the Guam Community College compete with the University of Guam. I would like to see both institutions coexist and complement each other. But if there were opportunities for four-year degrees that the university is not able to provide and the college is in a position to do so, then I would support it.
Thank you. Thank you again for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Sablon, I like how you say "moving forward." You know, that's exactly what it's about. It's always about moving forward and progressing. And I'd like to thank you for accepting the governor's appointment for another reappointment to the Board of Trustees, and also for your support, your unending support to Dr. Mary Ocata, Madam President, in seeking and ensuring that the Guam Community College is always out there looking for grants or out there looking for funding or whatever it means so that that educational facility could be one of the, if not the, best community college out there. And may I tell you, just what has been going on these past several years is just -- you just can't speak about it because it's more than words can ever say. So moving forward, you have my full support and my vote. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Good evening, Mr. Sablon. Half a day.
Half a day.
When we attended a forum as senatorial candidates about a year ago at GCC, one of the topics, questions that came up from the student body was how to make education more accessible and affordable to the student body. And one of the points that was brought up was perhaps looking at expanded online courses that could address that population that can't access the college because of family needs or childcare needs or perhaps transportation limitations. But is that another area that you, as a board member, are looking at in terms of improving the educational opportunities and the outreach and access to? Is that something that has ever crossed the board in the past year?
To my knowledge, I don't recall having had that discussion, but, you know, certainly I personally would welcome any opportunity to make higher education or continuing education available to those who want it. And if their inability to attend classes because of obligations with family or other obligations are impeding their ability, then -- and if online courses are the way to do that, then, you know, I would, you know, I would certainly, you know, be amenable to looking into it. Of course, you know, we would have to take a look at the cost involved in providing such an education, and, you know, we need to make sure that it -- we have the resources at the college to be able to carry it through. But if it works and if it's going to help, you know, if it's going to help others be able to get, you know, proceed with getting higher education, then it would have my support.
And I would appreciate that because as we look at ways to enhance education, there's -- we know that the community college offers services and opportunities to a certain niche of the demographics, either the older student or the student with an interrupted education or people perhaps who are not -- who feel that they're not in a position to invest in a four-year university track. And so I look forward to that type of news coming out of your board because I think that as we go forward with educational opportunities, we have to broaden what the traditional format for acquiring an education would be on Guam as well. But Sisus Mossi, thank you.
Yes, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Sablon, you're appointed by the governor, and you serve, of course, at the pleasure of the governor. And I'll never forget, on my first term, former Speaker Tony M. Pinko's advice that in the appointment of board members to serve by the governor, that basically you are the conduit between then the college and the governor. And I know that the, like you said, you know, fortunately, you have a president who's, you know, very astute to go out there and find funding wherever, you know, she can. I've been to conferences with her where if no one has ever given her any money, she'll make sure she'll have a conversation with you to make sure she gets some money from you. So, I mean, I know her caliber. However, there are times, of course, when the government is unable, because she said one of your major challenges was the availability of funds. And then so asked, you know, an appointee of the governor, have you then ever taken the time to approach the governor to be that, you know, person to encourage that, you know, or defend and show, of course, the governor that, you know, you've got an institution, you've got a president who basically has done very well. And, you know, it's so unfortunate that sometimes we have departments or agencies who do so well, and yet we've done nothing to show our appreciation, you know, by either some sort of, you know, benefit, so to speak, or award, or what have you, for doing such an excellent job. And so that's where you come in. And not so much a question in terms of maybe you asking you if you've actually gone to the governor to do this, but to encourage you then, ask an appointee of the governor to do just that, you see, on behalf of, you know, your -- the college, rather, that you are, you know, a board member of.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. If there is no one else that have, you know, any other questions, unless you have any closing remarks that you would like to impart.
Well, the only other remark I would like to make is I want to thank my fellow board members who have come out here today to support my confirmation hearing. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for the listening audience, if that, you know, you have an opportunity to provide testimony in behalf, of course, of, you know, the nominee. So you can either, like I said earlier, email my office, fax it to my office, drop it off here at the legislature's mailroom, or you can mail it to the legislature. And, Mr. Sablon, thank you for accepting, again, to serve. I know it's going to be -- it's difficult when you have a family and a young family of that and three businesses to also take care of, and at the same time to give back to the college, to our community. So we definitely appreciate you volunteering to do that. And I see no really real difficulty in reporting, you know, your nomination when we go into session, hopefully at the end of this month.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
So we're going to take just a minute to allow then those who are here for the nomination to exit the public hearing, and then we'll transition on to the next topic of our agenda. And that will be on Bill 230, which will be the renaming of the museum. And the individuals that I have who signed up, and I have two sheets, the very first one will be Margaret Palomo, Rose Manibusen, Joseph Cameron, and then I'll add Mr. Duñez, former Senator Duñez, as well, because we have four chairs. So can the four of you, please, come forward? Margaret Palomo, Rose Manibusen, Joseph Cameron, and former Senator Eddie Duñez. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's right above you. And maybe we can turn off this one? So before we begin, I would like to, of course, give the opportunity to Senator Tony Ada to briefly explain, of course, the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 230-33COR is a bill that names the newly constructed Guam museum after the late former Senator Antonio Tony M. Palomo. It indeed is an honor to sponsor this bill that would name our newly constructed museum after the late Senator Tony Palomo. Tony Palomo, a graduate of Marquette University School of Journalism, worked as a newspaper reporter and editor, a member of the 12, 14th, and 15th Guam Legislatures, and liaison of the Office of Insular Affairs. of the Office of Insular Affairs of the U.S. Department of Interior. In making the announcement in 1981, Vice President George H.W. Bush said of Tony Palomo, I quote, "He has the full confidence of President Reagan and myself. We learned a lot about Guam's history in our meetings with Tony, and he will represent Guam passionately in the Department of Interior," end quote. Although an accomplished statesman, Tony Palomo's passion was Guam's history. He wrote numerous articles for various publications. His most celebrated work was his book, An Island in Agony, that chronicled the struggles of Guam's people during the Japanese occupation. And during the last 11 years, at the end of his career, he was the director of the Guam Museum. So, I think, Madam Speaker, it is most appropriately, most appropriate that we look at this bill, and hopefully I'd be able to get the support of my colleagues in naming the new museum, the Senator Antonio, Antonio M. Palomo Museum. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. If I may, and I hope you don't mind, you all can be able to speak, but I just want to do a rearrangement out of protocol, and if, I would like to have, of course, Mrs. Palomo start off, and then former Senator Duñez, and then I'll go back to you, Rose, and then, of course, to Mr. Cameron. Okay? Is that okay with you?
I understand.
I understand. But we also know our place, and extend that courtesy as well to you. You're very welcome. So, Mrs. Palomo, go ahead and start with you. Joseph should be able to help you. Maybe Joseph bring it just a tad closer? Okay, thank you.
First of all, thank you, Senator Torres, Senator Wampat, Senator Underwood, and Senator Ada. I hope I'm not missing anyone.
No, you're not. You're good. Don't worry, there's nobody else here, just four of us.
I thought a written testimony is supposed to be... I don't have to read it.
That's true, because we all have a copy. But then, it's also important, because there are people out there in the community who would be tuning in and would like to hear it. This actually becomes part of our committee report as well.
All right. Yes, Senators of the 33rd Guam Legislature. On behalf of my family, Don Quixote Suzu Massey, for Bill 230-33, and the opportunity to name the Guam Museum building after my late husband, Antonio M. Palomo. It had been a difficult decision to agree to name the building after him. As you may know, Tony was a very humble person. See, that's what I meant. Knowing him, he would not agree to this idea. He would rather name the building Guam Museum. I am confident, though, that he would not agree to the name Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility. For many decades, the Guam Museum has been operating under such a name. Many directors and administrators of the Guam Museum committed their time and effort in promoting and preserving the rich history and culture of our island. It is most fitting to name a permanent structure with the title Guam Museum. As for including my husband's name, I have received much support from family, friends, and people from all sectors of society to honor him. It is up to your legislative body to make such a decision, but I hope that if approved, that the building reflects Antonio M. Palomo. In addition, my husband worked with many good people who supported the Guam Museum, such as past leaders of the Guam Museum. He would want to ensure that they too are recognized for their invaluable contribution to the mission of the Guam Museum. Thank you for your time and continued efforts in promoting our island's rich history and culture. Sincerely, Margaret Palomo.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Palomo. Senator Duñez?
Madam Speaker, and members of this committee, I am certainly delighted to be here today to testify in favor of Bill 230-33, co-authored by Senators Tony Ada and Frank Blas Jr. I wholeheartedly support the measure to name the, to name the new Guam and Chamorro Education Facility Museum in honor, excuse me, of the late Senator Tony Palomo, who has done so much for the development and progress of our island community. Excuse me, please, I gotta go. I applaud these two senators for taking the initiative to designate the new facility museum as memorial for Tony Palomo, whom Governor Eddie Blas Calvo said, when Tony passed away three years ago, that Guam has lost a great man, a great statesman. Tony's generation was greatly handicapped by the outbreak of an eventual occupation of the Japanese of Guam in World War II. Their education was timed for three years of enemy occupation, but Tony overcame this setback, and in 1951, left Guam to attend Belmont Abbey Prep High School. There, he struggled to keep pace with his fellow students, who had no idea what Tony had experienced during the war years and his aftermath. He then attended Marquette University in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and majored in journalism, attaining a bachelor's degree, and initially worked as an editorial aide for the Milwaukee Sentinel Daily Newspaper. Not leered by the comfort of life and better career opportunity in the U.S. mainland, Tony returned to Guam in 1954 and began his journalistic endeavor in helping to rebuild Guam in the aftermath of the war. He joined the Guam Daily News first as staff writer and local news and sports editor, then as assistant editor. An enterprising young journalist, also became stringer reporter for the Associated Press and the Pacific Star, Pacific Stars and Stripes. Advancing his career, he then became managing editor of the Pacific Journal, a second daily newspaper on Guam. He later became a publisher and editor of the Pacific Profile News Magazine and the Pacifican Weekly Publication. Following his journalistic, his crowning journalistic milestone, I feel, was the extensive research and writing of his book, An Island in Agony, a book that chronicled the personal stories of the people of Guam, who were innocent victims of the Japanese occupation. No doubt, Tony was a man of deep pride in his native root. He developed a keen interest in his cultural heritage, and decided to know, learn, teach, and perpetuate the Chamorro culture. His unceasing effort to tell the story of Guam was his passion, was a passion he developed to the point that he was considered an authoritative historian on Guam and its people. The 32nd Guam Legislature, in a resolution memorializing his passing away, called Tony Palomo a staunch advocate of the Chamorro culture and a historian at heart, who offered his insight without hesitation to any cause, requesting historical data and anecdotes. He taught Guam history at the University of Guam, Guam Community College, and at the Academy for Lady of Guam High School. Many of his students expressed their appreciation for his zentu demeanor, yet endless bounty of knowledge and compassion. Tony Palomo was a director, administrator of the Guam Museum for many years before his demise. He was passionate in enhancing the preservation and awareness of the Chamorro culture, and had exhibits set up, set up in Adlo and Chamorro Village in Agony, as well as extending satellite exhibits at the Guam Premier Outlet and the Macronishan Mall, attracting more than 200,000 patrons. He also provided support and guidance to many Chamorro cultural organizations, such as the Department of Chamorro Affairs, Guam Preservation Trust, and the Pa Tauta Tono, and Hurau Incorporated. There are many other notable achievements and milestones that Tony Palomo has to his credit, but suffice to state for this hearing, it will take many pages to document them. I am attaching an addendum to my testimony, a copy of the eulogy I delivered at the state funeral for Senator Tony Palomo. Naming Guam, and naming the Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility Museum in his honor is a fitting tribute to what Governor Eddie Calvo called "a great man, a great statesman." It is right and fitting to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Rose Manibusen, Rosa Nicholas Manibusen?
Honorable Speaker Judith Wampat, Senators of the 33rd Guam Legislature, good evening. I feel honored and privileged today to be here to support Bill 230-33. Although I have submitted written testimony, I am glad that I'm here to join the family and the friends of Tony Palomo to support, to support Bill Number 230-33, to rename the Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility Museum in honor of the late Senator, historian and author, Antonio M. Palomo. I would like to briefly share my personal experiences working with the late Senator Tony Palomo. And I first met Tony around 1985, and he gave me the privilege of saying, "You don't have to call me Mr. Palomo, Rose. Please call me Tony," with his infamous laugh. Early in my, I met him early in 1985, in my, early in my career with the Warren and Pacific National Historical Park with the National Park Service. Tony was a representative of the National, representative of the Office of Territory and International Affairs with the Department of Interior, and he was visiting the park with off-island VIP dignitaries. Little did I know at the time that Tony would become a friend, mentor, and assist me throughout my career as a historical advisor. I was honored and fortunate that Tony took me under his wings, and, oh, great, so sorry, took me under his wings, and called on me on several occasions to serve the leadership, to serve under his leadership as a board member of the Guam Museum, on several planning committees during the 50th and 60th Liberation of Guam anniversaries, and then later as a member of the Guam Museum, the Guam Museum Task Force, and Educational Quality Subcommittee Member. Through these opportunities, I not only learned from Tony, but I also observed firsthand his passion and his love of Guam history and culture. Tony was often called upon by the park and the community for his expertise. He not only gave his valuable time, but eagerly, eagerly, and willingly shared his wealth of knowledge and inspired us through his example. Those that know the history of the Guam Museum know of its long struggle for recognition and funding. Once under the umbrella of the Gania Library, the Guam Museum had no building, no staff, and no facility to properly store Guam's artifacts. Tony would write several planning documents, including the Guam Museum Multi-Year Report in 1999, that addressed the museum's needs for resources and provided the foundation for other planning documents that would follow. Tony was the one constant voice who, in many ways, over many years, through his dedication, commitment, and persistence, fought for the preservation of Guam's history and culture, fought for the protection of Guam's artifacts, paved the way and inspired others to support the development of his facility to house our island's history for the people of Guam. When I think of the Guam Museum, I think of Tony as its founding father. It is my recommendation and preferred desire to change the name Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility Museum to Antonio M. Palomo Guam Museum. It is my hope that Tony's invaluable contributions and service to the people of Guam through the many years, through the many hats he wore during his lifetime, will become the pages of our island's history, our island's history books that will inspire our people for generations to come. It is only fitting Guam's first new museum is renamed to honor Antonio M. Palomo for his lifelong efforts to perpetuate our history, language, and our culture. I thank you for the opportunity to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Mr. Cameron?
Buenas saludas, senadoras and senadores. Guam si Joseph Arturo Cameron, Guam i presidente gi Dipartamentu ni kaha'u guinansamoru. Humatu zo pa' guinapue'ngi ni pa' biu testiga, na hungan uso poti estina poso gi finu englis. Fuera di Guam presidenti pre Dipartamentu ni kaha'u guinansamoru, Guam loke subrinunia si Antonio difunto, gi familia kabe'esa na banda. Sa gui za'sumu ngani'uk'i ona'onpue'ngi leknia, afa na man ngi'ngi'ia'ua ni waa lekua sa'pu di amko'na'ua ke'ua, za'pu'ri spe'tu leknia, ahi, man ngi'ngi'ia'ua ki'za'guahu sa'pare'hu i haga'ta, inana'ua bi'a kabe'esa. Pe'spumarentis au loke, Senator Torres, za' si difunto Antonio, sa ti'umu loke sa' kabe'esa Gi finu englis, conflict of interest. Ahi, agun, pupata pani'ala ka. Lo mege masangan pu' estina kabazero, mege itzotnia, za' tai finak pu', ipau masangan imina'ua leknia, za' hungan esta gua'otru siya mantestiga, na estina kabazero honorable. Mege loke tumungu ni mani ekungu gi tivi lan napue'ngi, na sesu mali si difunto Antonio. Kumutiu muhu'zung za' guagwakli ha'fa tai manu paro'u masappa, za' po' ma'atendi ikutura za' nirensia za' infinu Chamorro. Kumumas propio sempikuha'apu u'sangan. Zangin kumentu si difunto Antonio, ti la'zi po'sangan ha'fa ni para, para umas' masangan, fuera di edzi mas' imputanti ni po' ma'ekungu. Sesu ripara na estina klasin cho'tsu ibidana'gi ma'posne'siya na sakka antes di fina'ta'ina. Ti salapia a'apas, magahi denuna sinangan Chamorro. Sa todi i tempo ni ana'i ni provenizi i finu Chamorro, za' nikutura za' nirensiata, todi tempo men halu'me estina tau'tau za' ago fatzuda'hit.
Madam Speaker, my name is Joseph Arturo Cameron. I am the president of the Department of Chamorro Affairs. I felt it very important, and you all know that each time I am called to this august body to provide testimony, I always start with the language of my first language, which is Chamorro. And I think it's befitting at all times that whoever is the president of Chamorro Affairs should speak Chamorro, read Chamorro, and write Chamorro. And I feel very confident in providing you that testimony earlier in Chamorro for those who are unable to reach in their deeper feelings of the Chamorro language. There are things that are said in English that don't touch the heart, but there are a lot of words that are only Chamorro-driven that will touch the hearts of our people. And for that reason, I find it most especially important to always testify in Chamorro. I am here, and I come before you today, in support of Bill Number 230-33, Committee on Rules. It is unquestionable that the late Antonio Tony M. Palomo promoted and managed the former Guam Museum at a time when resources were scarce to none. He not only provided management oversight to the museum, but more importantly, kept the Chamorro culture and heritage in the forefront of his every living breath. Additionally, to being a museum director, Mr. Palomo was Guam's premier historian on Guam and Chamorro history. It is very, very befitting that we honor Mr. Palomo by way of permanently memorializing his imprint in minds of all who entered the Guam Museum. Additionally, I would like to recommend highly that any reference to the word Additionally, I would like to recommend highly that any reference to the word "Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility" be stricken, be removed, and be referred to only as the Guam Museum, not to include the word Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility. The origin of the naming Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility was actually birthed as a direct result of a proposal, an application for funding to build the facility out of the USDA. That funding opportunity never came to fruition. There is no statutes currently referencing the Guam Museum as anything else but the Guam Museum, which is a division under the Department of Chamorro Affairs today. So, the Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility, for lack of a better word, is a misnomer. Thank you, Madam Chair and our honorable senators, for this opportunity to provide this testimony on behalf of the Department of Chamorro Affairs and the administration. Joseph Arturo Cameron, President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cameron, and I'm glad that you brought it up in terms of what the name is. I actually was in the legislature at the time when that bill was being considered and why USDA was requiring that it be named it as the Chamorro Educational Facility because of where the funding is coming from. And you're right, it actually came out of the hot bond. So, therefore, there is no obligation on the government's part to continue with that name. And yes, we continue to use the Guam Museum, and it will—we will make, you see, that correction as well. So, thank you for stating that. Is there—are there any questions, Senator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Palomo, Auntie Margaret, I just wanted to—you know, I know you had a very difficult time in—a difficult decision in agreeing to name the facility after your late husband. But—so, just so that there's no misunderstandings or anything, you are in support of Bill Two-Thirty-Dash-Thirty-three. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. Senators, any other questions or comments? Well, if I may, I'd like to go ahead and dismiss this first panel of individuals who like to testify. I do have the—two more. I have Connie Duñez. Is she still here? Okay, and Bill Pesch. And if there's anybody else who still like to testify, just let us know, and you can come forward. Okay. Mayor, you may—we'll start with you. You sit down. Okay. Estha.
Hi, I'm Concepcion B. Duñez from the village of Tonning.
Mampus.
Mampus? Okay. Malik Pakka? Okay. I'm here for whatever the other discussing about the bill that we're discussing tonight to name that beautiful and supposed time to have that beauty for the Guam Museum. Whenever I travel, the first place I go, especially to Washington, the Arlington Cemetery, and then go to the museum. I'm here to testify for one individual, this man Antonio M. Palomo. He is very silent, very knowledgeable, and very respectful person, and he knows about us, all of us on our island. So, let me post this. Mary, do you know Tony Palomo? Of course, it's your neighbor. Speaker, do you know Tony?
Ungan.
Ungan. And Marisa, you know Tony? He's one of your staff at one time. And of course, I'll call him little Senator Tony. You know Tony.
I had many opportunities to meet him at the Micro Mission.
When Tony went that soldier, the Japanese man was God. Tony was there, very quiet, but I know what's in his mind and his heart, that all those things that that guy said, he made it, he found it, would be at the museum. He speak louder by just looking at it than opening up his mouth. He's the man. I became a vice mayor in the mayor of Tonning to the influence of Tony and to some of you. I was—I think my gift is a gift from God to help people, and I put that into action, and I was able to do it. Until today, two o'clock in the morning, people would be knocking on my door, "Can you help me?" And my mother say, "Whatever God send to you, help them if you can." So, that is Tony Palomo too. And when—you know, the little—the little shelter for the museum was down, the family, it was down at the orchid, it was up at the Micro Mission Mall. Poor Margaret will be pedaling with the kids, and she doesn't even drive. She go, "Can you take me there to take care?" So, it would be open, and that's something that sometime you and I cannot do it, but Tony and the family do it. Several people of Tony's sibling are back here, if not all of them. But that's not only what—so, since you guys all know him, I have no problem that a yes vote would be a yes vote, and the governor would sign it, of course. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Pesch? Now, off in your—okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, senators, for this opportunity to meet with you. You're going to be very grateful, and everybody sitting here, that I did not bring my reading glasses, so I cannot read the written testimony that I presented to the legislature, which is—which is good. I knew Tony for about thirty-five years. It was my good fortune that when I left Guam in 1979 to attend law school and then worked for a year in Washington, D.C. after I graduated, that those years overlapped with the years that Tony was at the Department of Interior in Washington, D.C. So, there were times when I would be jonesing for a good Chamorro meal, and I would call up and speak either to Tony or Margaret and ask if I could come over and eat. And they always graciously invited me over after I invited myself, and I really, really appreciated that. It was also my privilege—I—many people may know that I have a personal interest in history. It really is an avocation of mine, and I had the great opportunity over a number of times to have some great discussions with Tony about different aspects of Guam's history. I really cannot think of any other person on this island who deserves the honor of having the Guam Museum named after them more than Tony does. He just really poured his heart, and everybody else has said here tonight. I'd be walking through the malls, and all of a sudden, there's Tony, and there's the—you know, the rest of the family who were always at the Guam Museum manning it, and no one—no family has put their time and effort into preserving and promoting Guam's history more than the Palomo family. And I just wholeheartedly support this bill. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I have certain things.
Yes.
I—you know, too bad.
When I get rid of that.
And then we have to name Tony Antonio M. Palomo, and he's not here today to see it. So, I hope in the future, if we're giving someone a credit or a building or a place after that person's name, it will be for he died. I hope that will.
I couldn't agree with you anymore than that.
That would be beautiful, you know? Why do we name it? Like, my grandson came home, and I said, "Grandpa, who are you giving your ring to?" And said, "To one of you." I said, "I'd like to have it. I want to get my inheritance, so you can see that I'm enjoying it." Other than when you're—it's a smart boy.
Yes.
He is, he's a smart boy.
So, I hope in the future that, you know—I'm sure—you know, Margaret and Tony are the same, very isolated people. They don't want in the highlight. They want it back there. But, you know, they married it. They deserve it, and you and I know that we have to give it to him, but before he died next time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Tony.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from anyone here? Thank you so much for your testimony. I just want to—I have one question that I'd like to ask Mr. Cameron, only because it was brought to my attention, and just for the listening audience and those who are here, is just to really clarify some things. Mr. Cameron, can you—I'm not going to put you in any spot or anything, don't worry. But, just—I mean, since we gave a little history in terms of the misnomer, the misnaming of the museum, and I just want to clear the air as well, only because, you know, it was brought to my attention, that have—have any other families or individuals approached you or anyone in your staff about naming rights of the museum, of the Guam Museum?
There was a family member of a former educator who has since passed away. The desire was that the grandparent, the grandfather, be named after the facility, only to find out—and Simeon and I were working this situation out because we needed to let the family know, most especially the granddaughter, that the naming of Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility was not reflective of a school, and that, in fact, was the situation here. The family have made other attempts to see that individual named after a school. So, like we all do, we pass by, and we see this name Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility. So, we went through some trying times, trying to figure out how can we best explain this to the family without hurting their feelings or anything of that such, because it's just not in our culture to be abrupt and push people away. So, that family did understand, and I did document that.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that that then be part of our record.
Is that all?
Yes.
Oh, that was easy.
I told you I wasn't going to put you in a spot. Unless, you know, you want to—well, yes, come right back here now that you've opened it up. It's your—it's your fault. Just for us to know to—
Good exercise.
When do you anticipate the opening of the museum?
We're looking at moving parts here, and the best agency, actually, to answer that question, Madam Speaker, would be the Guam Economic Development Agency. We're just sort of like the turnkey, and of course, the media has, on many occasions, given dates that were provided them. But more importantly, we're looking at, most especially, the first floor, which incorporates the traveling exhibit, the museum store area, and the multipurpose area for forum seminars to be available for Festback purposes, as well as the indoor and the outdoor theater. Unfortunately, as all things are, for as long as the builder is in the building, it would be extremely difficult for the fabricators and for the designers to be actually on-site while things are being still completed. So, at a later date, we will look at opening up the second floor for the permanent exhibits, which is the heart and soul of the building, the Guam Museum.
Can you tell us a little bit about that when you say "the heart"? So, just so we can visualize this then, you're saying that on the first floor will be the museum store, and then the opportunity in a hall for traveling exhibits maybe, like for—of course, I don't think we're going to get it like the King Tut, you know, exhibit to be on display, but we can probably get others, you know, elsewhere.
There are many other museums that have traveling exhibits at a cost.
So, that would be the first floor. You're right. And then the second floor, where you say is the heart of the museum, basically. So, describe that to us and why it is so.
We were most especially concerned about the whole concept, to coin the phrase, "the hundred-year flood," and being nearshore, as all things are, and also considering that there's no major windows to the building, that it made appropriate sense, like they say, common sense, to place our treasures, i kaha', the treasure of the Chamoros, above any concerns of flooding. So, for that reason, it's not like when you walk into the Mall of Museums, the Smithsonian, where you immediately just traverse into the first floor, and that's it. That cannot be. We have an elevator that will take us up to the Orientation Theater, where you would have a view of kind of like a pre-story of what you're going to be actually seeing as theme the Hinana'uta, our journey, our past, our present, and our future. I might add that on the first floor, there is a small segment that allows the people to not just finish off the permanent exhibit, and every museum has a permanent exhibit that tells the full story of the people of that place. But on the way down, there is a segue that allows for the future, and that's being worked on just as well. But it's not a large area, because the largest of the area for the permanent exhibit is upstairs.
I see. So, well, I mean, the way you describe it actually describes almost like the way the huts used to be where, you know, where—
Yeah, the latte, where it stood up above the water.
Will be above ground.
And it made sense. It made perfect sense, and we want to keep this museum forever. And I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for proposing legislation, and it passed, and it mustered, and I want to thank all the senators who always have promoted—there were three other bills that promoted the Guam Museum and its efforts to catapult and to move forward. We are just sixty-plus days away from Festback, and we're looking forward to signing off very soon on a contract that would have a management operation.
Now, you mentioned also an indoor and an outdoor theater. Can you describe that as well?
In most museums, the theaters are quite small, where maybe at very least thirty people or less. If you've been to the Seattle Glass Museum, it probably fits only probably twelve. That's—that's small. But in some of the larger museums in Texas that I have visited actually have an auditorium-slash-theater so that it has a multi-approach, not just for the sake of showing festival or Chamorro-driven theatrical expressions, but it also allows for the multi-use, for multimedia, for Skype, for teleconferencing. These are our big, big tandem leaps when you're looking at how to sustain a museum nowadays, because it's very obvious that although we will have admissions, a great many of the tourists over the years have always commented on their exit interviews from Guam, and they were collected by the Guam Visitors Bureau, that Guam did not have a culture, or at least in their eyes, they couldn't see a culture. But that translated to a house of curiosities. That's the first word that people do, is they're curious about the people. And for those listening out there, the actual name of the museum, when it first came out, was not museum, it was House of Curiosities. But to make it plain, over the years, museology has taken a new leap to tell the story of the indigenous people of that area, and we're very happy that this museum will— And we're very happy that this museum will withhold the test of time and that the people of Guam need to sustain it. And I want to thank you in advance, before the bill gets passed, to vote yes that the utility costs for water and power is something that our people of Guam would be more than willing. That's what I'm thinking, to, at least at the very least, to pay for that, so we can sustain keeping the museum open. There's temperature control, there's security, there's cameras everywhere like you can imagine. It's a foolproof opportunity. I had several conversations with the American Alliance at museum. Just tell me to shut up anytime. Wherein accreditation nowadays for museums is not just so much on the technicalities, but that every museum should be, to capture the phrase, a living museum. Gone are the days where they said, oh, are you taking care of your artifacts pretty good? Yeah, that counts. But not really only that. If a museum nowadays under the auspices of the accreditation team for the American Alliance Museum, they want to know that you have programming. They want to know that your community is forthright and supportive by actually walking into the museum and being part of that experience, such as a STEM project, which I have promoted, and I look forward to making that happen. I also like to promote all the facets of our people of Guam, who are not necessarily Chamorro, but made Guam their home. There's a story to be told on the fabric of our lives. And I will end it at that.
Thank you very much. Senator Torres, you said you had a question or comment? Okay. Well, thank you very much for that information. And I think maybe sometime after the museum is fully open, that we would bring you in on a roundtable discussion so you can then enlighten not just the members, but the community in terms of, you know, what will be in the museum, so that then we can, you know, have our people.
Definitely. That would be my pleasure. Thank you, Madam Speaker and senators.
I appreciate it. The Committee then Higher Education, Culture, Public Library, and Women's Affairs have met the requirements of the law to not only have the hearing for the appointment of Mr. Richard P. Sablon to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, and to also hear Bill 230-33 on the renaming of the museum. If there are any other comments that the, those who are here who would like to provide additional comments, that you can email it to Frank Torres, You can mail it to 155 Hessler Place here in Nagatia. You can also deliver it to our mailroom, and you can fax it to 472-3589. So with that, I want to thank all of you who came out to support. You may not have any written testimony, but your presence definitely is a support. I want to thank you for that. So therefore, it is 7:25, right? Oh, I can't even see, it's glaring. 6:50. I think I need to change my glasses. 6:50 PM. And this concludes then our public hearing. We are adjourned. Thank you.